Good evening. We're going to begin the council work session for May 4th, 2020. If you would join me reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge of allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
States of America.
And to the republic.
Republic.
Of the nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
Justice.
For all.
Thank. So this evening's council work session on our agenda, we're going to be discussing the various items by Mike Thomas. We'll go into citizens comments if we receive any between now and the time that we conclude the work session. And then we'll be adjourning for executive session afterwards. As you can see, we're still in our virtual format, given the social distancing restrictions due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We'll continue to operate in this fashion until such a time as those social distancing restrictions are lifted. At this point in time, I'll turn the meeting over to Mike Thomas to go over the work session items for the agenda this evening. Sir Thomas.
Thank you. The first item is the Comcast cable franchise agreement. We have two franchise agreements for cable TV services in Plum, a Verizon agreement and a Comcast agreement. Both are set to expire shortly. We're renegotiating both actually for the last year and a half or so. Right now, back in 2018, council hired the Cohen Law Group to represent the borough and renegotiate these new agreements, but with Comcast and Verizon. The Comcast negotiations have concluded and council has a copy of that proposed agreement in the agenda packets, as well as the summary prepared by Cohen Law Group, so you don't have to go through the whole contract. Again, this is, this would be a 10-year agreement effective the date we council were to approve it. I'll go over some of the major points of the agreement quickly. It's all, this is all included in the summary that was provided by Cohen Law Group. This, this agreement would be a 5% franchise agreement. This is the max allowed by law, and that is the current amount that we have, 5%. This agreement does have better language regarding customer service standards. And actually, I would argue they're enforceable, the language, it actually now has enforceable customer service standards that we can actually hold Comcast accountable in those situations where we have issues with, from, from the residents. They've added a few, we've added a few reporting, additional reporting requirements. The, the main one is the detailed quarterly franchise report. We've always received franchise reports. It's the detail that is, that is changed now. The report that they provide now gives us the detail, gives a lot more detail to enable, or that they will after this agreement, gives us a lot more detail to be able to determine whether or not they're paying us, in fact, the full 5% franchise fee as required. It also is our audit trail, should we have to take up, should we have to audit that, the franchise fee payments. Also new to this agreement would be a customer complaint report. And also they've agreed to provide us with any notice that they receive from any state or federal regulatory agencies regarding their service or customer complaints. This agreement requires them to maintain the existing Comcast Channel 19 standard definition channel for free. However, it does, because of, because of a recent FCC ruling, up until this point, cable providers provided cable services, that is, the actual cable drop and the converter box within the municipal building for free. They also provided them for the community center, the public works garage, the, the water and sewer authority, and the fire companies. All told, there's around 20 free cable services. As per the recent FCC ruling, the cable companies can, we can do one of two things. We can either pay the fee monthly for those cable services that we intend to make, to continue, or they can deduct that amount from their monthly franchise fee that they pay to the borough. So you've got kind of two issues here. The first one is, you know, do we, how do we pay? The second one is, for whom will we pay? Because some of those free services are for outside entities, water authority, fire companies, community center. And I'm not suggesting we need to debate and or decide that tonight. That is just something to be aware of when approving the agreement. Again, it's a, this is a 10-year agreement. And actually, something else that's, that's important, although it really doesn't impact the final product, is a language, a competitive equity provision that Comcast is required or insisted on in this agreement. Because they know that we are currently also negotiating agreement with Verizon. They want to make sure that we don't, you know, we don't have a 5% franchise fee in the Comcast agreement and a 4% franchise fee in the Verizon agreement, thereby giving Verizon a competitive advantage. So the language essentially stipulates that if there's any, if, you know, if we were to do something like that, if we were to offer Verizon, negotiate a 4% with Verizon and a 5% franchise fee with Comcast, that Comcast would have the legal right to enforce the 4%. I can tell you that we're, you know, our plans are to negotiate identical agreements and we're on track to do just that. But that is, I wanted to bring that to council's attention. That is a provision that they've been insisting about, and I think we can all kind of understand why.
Discussion. So Mike, I did have one question about this. The, the free cable services that they're going to discontinue. Have we had a chance to notify some of the community organizations to make them aware that that these free services are going to be taken away?
Well, I'm going to have to find out from all the community groups who has what. Because for example, our original franchise agreement gave the community center one free cable service. I'm pretty sure they have more than one up there, though. So they might, so they're, they would be paying for the second or third. So I've got to get a better track on who has the free ones and who is still paying. But we've not talked about this with anybody yet to see if councils, what council's pleasure is in this. At the end of the day, though, because of that FCC ruling, there's not much we can do about it. Well, there's nothing about it.
What, 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 what would be their charge? Would it be just like their basic, basic, like the cheapest?
It's 20, it's 2260 a month per, per cable box. Cause it's 1656 or 52 for the service. And then it's like a $6.50 per month rental for the actual converter box.
Okay, so if say, say the fire departments, everybody wanted to keep it, they would have to figure out how they were going to pay their $22 bill.
Per month, yes.
Okay.
It, it's either that or, or the borough considers funding it. I'm not saying we should do that, but that's the other option, right?
Yeah, they would just automatically, they would not bill us for any of those cable drops. They would just deduct it. But that's why I need to get a handle on how many each group has. You know.
Okay.
I mean, I know how many we have.
Also find out, did the fire departments even watch TV? I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, I know the senior citizen center probably uses it a lot. But, you know, for, for $22 a month at the four fire departments, if no one really watches the TV and we have to pay for it, why, why would we go ahead and pay for it? So when you, when you're asking questions, who has what? Find out, you know, do they even really utilize it?
Well, it's not so much for them to, you know, watch, you know, Charlie's Angels or Manics. It's, you know, a lot of the, we, we have the TVs in the building example, for example, for, you know, to be able to access news, especially for an emergency situations. So they're going to want at least one cable drop in their buildings, at least for that. Cause it's a way of getting information for them.
Right. Well, then that's probably going to be.
That part makes sense.
Pay for it. Yeah.
Yeah. But again, we don't have to decide that now. We just, at issue tonight is just simply the agreement.
And then being aware that they're, they're changing things like that. So I, I would agree with needing at least one cable hookup, but I mean, like Paul said, how much do they actually use it? So that's something we want to make sure we gauge.
All, all the, all told, we have about my, by my estimation, we have about 20, 20 cable hookups. About $5,500 a year. That's borough, community center, fire companies, public works, water authority.
Mike, you guys generally every 10 years renegotiate the contract?
Yeah, the existing contract has, is, was a 10-year contract with five, with two five-year auto renewals, unless either side notified the other party that they wanted to renegotiate, which is what we did in 2018 when we engaged Dan Cohen's group. But typically, these, the, the cable providers don't want to look at anything less than 10 years.
Okay, but the five-year, like you guys usually, do you auto, do you all, you always auto renew the five-year or do you, do you automatically go back into negotiations? Like, is there even reason to have those extensions in there?
They, they like them, they being the cable providers. We've never just done that. We've always renegotiated every 10.
Okay.
But, you know, as long as, it's just a simple matter of as long as nobody's asleep at the wheel here and we make sure that we notify them that we want to renegotiate, then we don't, you know, it makes them feel a little bit better.
Yeah. No, I just know how sometimes it, like waste management does with us, if we don't get it auto renewed. Back to them, yeah. If you don't get back to them or renegotiate, then they, and you don't notify them with 120 days, then that auto renews and it's, you know, so you have to be diligent. So sometimes it's better not to have the extensions or auto renewies, but that's why I was curious.
We could talk to them about it. I don't know if it's a, you know, if it is a deal breaker. But if we're going to get into sort of the specifics of the agreement, we should probably go into executive session.
Okay.
Any additional discussion? Agenda.
Okay, the second item is the feral cat ordinance. The mayor's and the solicitor's office have put, put together a draft ordinance staff. We reviewed it in our most recent staff meeting. And our only two comments, although they're significant ones, are, one, we would like to recommend that we sort of pull out the feral cat, just make this a cat ordinance for now. Just because the, the ordinance itself is kind of dealing with, you know, a whole host of other species of animals and pets and other issues. And this is a significant enough issue that we felt like we should just focus on that for now. And then we can certainly revisit and certainly intend to revisit those other issues at a later date. And, you know, that's in a few, in the coming months, not in the coming years. And then the other thing was that when we looked at the practical issues related to implementation of these regulations, you know, you know, we don't have the staff resources, expertise, equipment to, you know, sort of do most of the things that this ordinance would require. However, we've done some research and we found a couple local community groups, and I say local, I don't mean in Plum, I just mean close by Plum, that there are organizations that are, that are, that are equipped to do these things for a very nominal fee. And it would be a relationship similar or identical like what we have with Hoffman on the dog catching side. And they're capable of coordinating those trap neuter release programs as well for us. They could serve as the, you know, in the exact same capacity that Hoffman's does for the dogs. Now Hoffman's will do cats, just so I want to clarify that, they will do that. But, you know, we, we personally have had, we being the staff in the police department, have had a positive experience with Hoffman's over the years. However, we all know that over the years, we've gotten some complaints about Hoffman's and Hoffman certainly has his or their detractors or, or opponents, if you will. So we just felt to find, to find somebody that specializes in cats and feral cats and these kind of programs. And they are out there, there's one right over in, across the river in Trenum that we, that we've reached out to. We think they might be a good, a good partner for this, a good fit, because they can do everything. They can do the, the TNR programs, they can do the outreach, you know, they're, and, and they are trying to grow as an organization by offering these kind of services. So our, our plan was let's get them on board at the same time. And then maybe in June, if we can kind of pull this all together and then adopt just the cat ordinance or the feral cat ordinance. And then we'll revisit the other pieces later.
Well, Mike, do we have to go out for a bid on this whenever we decide which, which group is going to handle it for us?
Um, yeah, I mean, that's maybe a question for, for Bruce. I would suggest that it's such a specialized service and we're, and we're talking about a few hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, I don't think, you're not going to get to that, that level that you have to go out for a bid.
Okay.
And I agree with Mike, it is a specialized thing.
Very good.
It's like the towing contract.
Don't get into that.
So if everybody's comfortable with that, then we would like to propose that the, try and play, because we'd have to advertise this anyway to adopt it as an ordinance. We're not ready to do that yet. But if everybody is comfortable with the approach, you know, we'd like that our target date would be to have this all in place for the June, June adoption.
So it doesn't necessarily be an item for, for next week, right?
Correct.
Good, because there's definitely some language things I think we might want to clean up. And at least in one or two of the sections, just to make sure, especially now since we're just going to be focusing on the stray and feral cat part, not the other animals. I like that. Are we going to be leaving the tipped ear thing in?
You have to do it if you're doing TNR, that's tipping.
Okay, so then again, I think that's.
Feral cats.
Why, and I think again, that's just part of making the language more specific about it being feral cats that are subjected tipping, not somebody's house cat that's outside all the time.
No, well, the whole purpose of, of tipping is so that at a distance, someone sees a cat. They know if it's, if it's a feral cat or a group of cats, that that cat has been neutered.
Yeah, and it makes sense for feral animals.
Or if they trapped the cat.
Just the way it's written here, it just says. Yeah, just the way it's written here, it says any cat. So that means like my cat that hangs outside would need tip. And that's where I just think we need to clean up the language a little bit to.
We can do that, that's easy.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like not affect, you know, you know, your regular citizen.
Is your cat licensed and does it have all its rabies shots in it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, but, you know, part C of section nine as the, is the tip thing. So all you'd have to do is change it to any, you know, shall be lawful for any feral cat to be outside, you know what I mean? Because there are people that have house cats that go outside that, you know, don't need to be tipped because they're chipped. They're, they get their rabies shots, they go to the vets, they're taken care of.
But how do you identify those? How do you identify separate cats at a distance? And I mean, if it doesn't have a tipped, tipped ear, doesn't mean it's a feral cat and it doesn't mean it's not really, so.
Well, I think that's where you have to, you know, go based on sightings maybe. I mean, I, we need to figure that part out, but it just, I don't want like regular citizens having issues with their cats that are just outside a lot, you know? But it makes sense for feral animals and cats that are deemed nuisances to neighborhoods and things like that.
Well, a house cat that's going around defecating on someone's property is a nuisance.
Yeah.
Are any other items on this, discussion on this item?
The, those are the only two I had. And since we're going to make it just, you know, cats and not the other animals, the concern in section X doesn't matter.
Okay, next item, Mr. Thomas.
Okay, the next item is, is an executive session item that we will, we will do the end of the, the meeting here. Item number four is the Penn dot electronic access agreement. In your agenda packets is an agreement with Penn dot for the, for the police department to be able to access the Penn dot crash data site. A few months back, when we were discussing the Ralph Seifels old Leachburg intersection and difficult, the issues there, Mr. Delaney asked if we could look into all intersections, which we actually did. Because we are a mandatory reporter for the PA, the Department of Transportation crash site, which means we have to put all of our crash data in. And crash data essentially means anything that isn't a fender bender. If the police aren't called, EMS aren't called, if there's not a tow truck called, if there's no significant injury or loss of life. So it's pretty comprehensive when it comes to crash data. And this crash data is more than 30 years old. I mean, we have data going back more than 30 years. So we were able to actually go into the site and pull a lot of the crash data up. You'd actually be surprised where the, the height, the most significant number of crashes are. And we're, we're planning at either June or July to put together a whole presentation for council on this. But it's not where, the accidents are not where you think they are. But in any event, the point of this agenda item this evening was because initially DOT said, we just need to, we just need your borough manager to sign off on this user agreement. And then, you know, a month later or so, they came back and said, you know, well, we're not sure if a borough manager in Pennsylvania has the authority to sign. And it went back and forth between their attorneys. And I said, you know what, let's just, what do you need? What do you want from council? So in your agenda packets is an authorization to have me sign a user agreement, which quite honestly, I've already signed months ago. But they just want this for their file to make sure. So they actually, I should say that, they didn't even ask for it. I just said, give me a document, I'll have council vote on it. That way you guys can have this for your files. But we're actually, we've already been using the data in the site. So it's just a simple authorization for me to sign a user agreement that I've already signed.
Okay, discussion. Does this also need to be an agenda item?
Yes, it does. There's a resolution in there that they want you to sign authorizing me to. If you look in the agenda packet there under public safety.
Yeah, is that the last paragraph, the signatory authority with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll just, I'll, I'll just put together some resolution and we'll, you know.
Okay.
The next item is the.
That's an agenda.
Yes, sorry. The next item is the resolution for grant for phase two of Renton Park. Renton Park is a, as you know, we're renovating both Renton and Logan's Ferry Park, community parks. We have about a $575,000 budget for Renton Park. It's a four-phase project. Phase one will be done this summer. We received about $75,000 or so in grant funds for phase one. We are applying for $138,000 roughly for phase two. And in order to do that, we need a resolution from council authorizing the grant application. That resolution is included in the agenda packet.
Discussion.
Mike, I just, yeah, I have a question. I mean, 575,000 for the total project, is that correct?
Yes.
That's a heck of a park. What are we doing?
Uh, if you look on the, on the resolution there, if you see there's a significant amount of wa, funds, Dave, well, there's paving, there's new play courts, a new play structure, ADA handicap accessible parking, a new pavilion. Stormwater is, is a significant portion of that cost.
Bocce courts, they got bocce courts, we're going to have benches, better lighting, we're going to redo the basketball court. So it's, it's a pretty hefty thing, but it's a, it's a really nice expansion there.
That's nice. I share, we shared the, the master plan with council and we have new council members. I'd be happy to reshare that master plan with everyone. I'll just drop it by email tomorrow.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, Dave, thank you.
That, that would be awesome. I love, I want to know all the details. So excited to see that park in Renton getting an upgrade.
So this is, this is a, a portion of that's all being funded by this Greenway Trails and Recreation Program grant, right?
Yeah.
138,000? And then the rest is, is, is being funded out of our, our, our budget?
Um, yeah, some of it is, and, and we could continue to apply for other grants as well as we move forward. Even smaller grants for, you know, we could use CDB, CDBG dollars for different things. But as of right now, yeah, we are at about, about $220,000. Some are approaching half, 50% of the project funding and grants.
Okay.
Would the, would the grant, would this project qualify for a growing greener grant of any kind or is that what we're already getting?
It, it's a, it's a Greenways Trails grant. And a growing greener grant would probably take you at least a year or two to get the growing greener grants. So we've, we've had some luck with, with this funding source and we're going to go back and then try and get it refunded for phase two.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All right, agenda.
Okay, item number six is the 2020 real estate tax deadline. As a result of the pandemic, Latin, I believe it was March, might have been April, the Pennsylvania legislature passed, legislature passed Act 15. Act 15 had a lot of different things into, things in it related to the pandemic. But one thing in specific was the extension of deadlines for taxes due in any given tax year. Excuse me, any type of taxes in 2020, in this tax year. They extended the deadline for real estate tax to be paid without penalty and interest to 12/31/20. However, in the legislation itself, they required municipalities who intended to have that deadline applied to their tax bills to do that by resolution. So if council, if council wants to extend that deadline to December 31st of this year, and Harry, our deadline without penalty and interest right now is October 1st?
Okay, uh, no, without penalty and, you mean discount or penalty without penalty?
Without penalty, not discount.
It's October 31st.
October 31st. So you'd be extending it for two more months for the people as a result of the pandemic.
Now, we already go, if they go on the payment plan, they already go till December 15th, but you're talking, so I mean, it's already there if they want to take the payment planner.
Well, see, keep in mind that when the state legislator passed this, not all municipalities send out their real estate tax bills at the same time. We send ours out later than most. So for a municipality that may have sent their bills out in January, this means a lot more than it does the plum, plum taxpayers.
So when do we normally send ours out?
July. Bills go out in July.
Okay.
But they go out with the school district taxes. All school district taxes in Pennsylvania go out July. Municipalities can send them out anytime. A lot of them do January, February, something on March, April, whatever. We happen to do both together, borough and school, to defray some of the costs, to split the cost of printing and postings between the two taxing districts.
Yeah, that makes sense. Do, do we think the extra two months is, I mean.
I don't think it's that big of a deal. Your vast majority, your money's coming in from the mortgage company. At, at, they pay a discount, so they all pay before the end of August.
Because.
That's probably 60, 70% of your, your, your revenue.
Cause it's all escrowed by residents?
Correct, correct.
So then, I mean, I, I mean, does, is anybody really think we need to extend it to December?
Just a question, would it, would it affect with any of the budgeting for, by moving it two months later? Would it affect the budget for 2021 in any way, shape or form?
Would affect the budget for twenty twenty-one in any way, shape or form?
Not really, because uh, any taxes that are not paid, uh, they they start collecting penalty and interest. We lean, um, you have to lean it before um April, I believe. So you still, you still occur to lean cost uh for unpaid taxes in in the following year.
And like Harry said, the overwhelming majority of our real estate tax revenues are paid, are escrowed taxes paid by mortgage companies. So this would be helping out, you know, and the other portion of those people are the people that already own their homes, don't have a mortgage. Um, and those tend to be people that, you know, are um, you know, retired. Um, who might not be impacted at all, or at least a- as significantly by the pandemic as, say, people that are working and paying a mortgage.
Right.
Okay.
Well, another, another thing is that I I don't think, we wouldn't have much choice if we didn't, because it's. This is passed by the legislation, it was passed, I mean, Act fifteen was passed in March. So would we have any recourse if we didn't want to extend it, so let's just extend it.
Yeah.
I I I could go either way, I'm, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I don't see a safe deal.
Yeah, I mean, is Act fifteen saying we have to do it, Mike?
I'm sorry?
Act fifteen is essentially saying we 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 can do it or we have to do it.
You can do it.
So so we're not required to do it?
You're not required to do it, no, and that's why they added that language in there. Um, that's the, of all the tax deadlines that they extended, this is the only one that they said, if you want to do this, you have to do, you have to adopt a resolution.
Yeah, I I I see no reason to to extend it, um, uh, and and file paperwork to extend it, I mean, if we don't really think we need it. And why file a resolution just because of Act fifteen, if we're not required to do it, unless anyone thinks we're gonna, residents are gonna benefit greatly by extending it two months.
You know, the only, the only thing is, um, people that pay their own taxes, they know that they don't have a mortgage company pay. Or you're paying it at discount. Or they know they have to pay it without the penalty, the ten percent penalty by the end of October. The vast majority go on the payment plan, which gives them until December thirty-first without penalty.
Right, right.
So if they're in financial difficulty, they're going to opt for the fine, they're going to opt for the um, the payment plan. Which is one-third due uh by the end of August, one-third by the end of October, the final third due by the end of December.
So the, so the waiver wouldn't, this deadline wouldn't really give anybody something they don't already have anyway?
I think so, I agree with that.
I I I see no reason to extend it unless there's others that have a compelling reason why we should. Okay.
So that's not an agenda item, then?
Not an agenda item.
Okay, and then finally. Um, before we go into executive session. Um, item seven, I I I apologize, I added this late today, I got an email from um, from PMA, that's the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency. Um, late on Friday. Um. We have been following along with PMA and the county, Allegheny County Emergency Management Agency. Um, they've been requiring us to submit periodic information to them regarding any extraordinary expenses related to the pandemic. Um, to date, I can tell you that we are somewhere south of thirty-five hundred dollars in in expenses related to this, so. We're not in, we're not in any dire shape as a result of any e- extraordinary expenses related to this. Um, and my understanding from PMA is that you're not even eligible one, until you, until you hit that thirty-five hundred dollar threshold. Um, we don't know that we will, but in the event that we will, or that we do experience any additional expenses that we don't foresee at this time. Um. We're going to continue to move forward with a potential PMA application. Um, PMA has scheduled a um mandatory webinar for us for Wednesday at ten AM. Which a number of the staff will be participating in. I have this on the agenda so that in the event that we need to take action on Monday.
That we will.
That we would still be in a position to do so, but I don't know that we will need to do anything on Monday. So I would just ask if council would keep it on the agenda in, in the case, in the event that we would need it, and if not, we'll just table it until the following month. Or maybe never, because we may never actually have to apply.
Sounds good, I think.
Sounds good.